Call of the board of the town council meeting for August 7, 2019. The town members called Brian to join the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are important, electronic, like if you go by an agenda, anything wishing to have something placed on your agenda for discussion by the council should have had this town hall by the previous Wednesday at three o'clock. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we ask you to assign the chief over here. Approval minutes from July 15, 2019, town council and work sessions have three. Email these out, everyone.
I'd like to offer a suggestion on our old business. It appears to me as though all that old business is the report from the town manager. And there's a lot of "I" language in there, but we don't know who "I" is. So I keep to put a note in there that just says, just add town manager above that, so we know what that's referring to, just for clarity.
Thank you. Motion to accept minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilman Green, second by councilman Paul Groves to accept the minutes. Approval minutes of July 15, town council and work meeting in work session. Paul Groves in favor. Steve Farmer saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, still carry. Reports, mayor's reports have five. Another busy month. First, I want to thank councilman Paul Groves, who took a few of us out on a water and sewer facilities tour. I think that was very transformative, enlightening for Kevin, Kevin's not here, Kevin Corning, planning commission, and then councilman Green, he got to see the water and sewer facilities. So, thank you for that. And then also, while we were walking around a wastewater treatment plant, back in around 2012, I think, Lehigh cement company put a weather station down by our wastewater treatment plant. And it was basically to show how much wind and maybe dust is coming from aquarium and other factors. And however, I don't think MBE accepted what they were providing with that weather station. So, we were given the weather station. We, I have contacted Lehigh cement company, and they gave me contact information of the company that installed it, to see whether or not we can get it up and running, and maybe have residents, you know, go online and see what the weather is, you know, when, maybe if you're on vacation and you get a report of the worst, that there's thunderstorms, you can see the actual weather here in New Windsor. Just something that, you know, maybe just for educational purposes for the kids to also get online and see what the weather is here in New Windsor. So, hopefully we can get that up and running. Went to the Paul's Crab and Plan B, July 17. Talked to the governor and lieutenant governor a little bit, and told them about some of our issues out here. And then I had the honor of reading a proclamation for Jim Carrion, former mayor of Tonetown, after thirty years, thirty-four years of service. All eight mayors of Carroll County were there. That's one of the few times where it's not an MML meeting, or some type of government meeting, where all mayors are together. So, Jim was real pleased to see all eight mayors there. It was quite an honor for his years of service in Tonetown. July 29, I met with Garrett Glover, who is the economic development, well, retail restaurant industries management consultant for the Maryland Small Business Development Center, University of Maryland College Clark. And I'm trying to get a follow-up meeting with Stephen Collet, business consultant for Carroll County with SBDC, along with councilwoman Schultz. So, we just got to get our schedules together, and he can come out and try to help us bring in some small businesses. And then on August 1st, last Thursday, had a very good site meeting with community legacy review team. We put in a grant for $850,000 for the stabilization of the foundation at Deelman Inn. They had a team of four, I had a team of four or five myself. And that included Chuck Metzschmidt, owner of the Bourbon Bar and Grill in Danover, Pennsylvania, Jeff Childs and Martha Elliott from Lewis Construction, who actually did the work for the assessment of the foundation, and Jessica Felt from Preservation Maryland. And we were there probably for about two hours, going through the building, looking for the foundation, and talking about possible uses there, especially some ideas that Chuck had. He's going to take the blueprints of the Deelman, and have his designer put in what he would anticipate businesses to be, like a microbrewery in one part, a bakery, coffee shop. And then I'll send that down to the team that came out for the site visit. So, they, I think they left here a little more impressed, and probably a little more supportive than when they got here, because I think we had a good presentation. Let's ask, I already changed Maryland, had a fundraiser, big road over outside DMSD. Again, got to talk to the governor, lieutenant governor, Rutherford, secretary David Frankly, special secretary Lynn Peters, secretary Donald, DNR superintendent Robert Ziegler, Robert Conley, who is the president of the Warfield Companies, that is, developing the Warfield Complex down in Sykesville. He may not be involved in renovating at Deelman Inn, but he was very excited to hear about it. So, I sent him a lot of information that I had, and I said, you know, even if it's not financial support, if you can find people in your field that might be interested in helping us out, please do. And then, probably one of the biggest things I'd like to talk about is National Night Out. Brian, you can come up front, please. As you know, our National Night Out has been growing. Last night, we had over forty vendors, free snow cones, the Lions Club provided hot dogs, chips, sodas, water, ice cream, and all the vendors seemed like they had a lot of information to give out. Probably about 275, 300 people there, even with a little shower of rain, pull things off, which was good planning, but a little less rain that time, maybe. But I think we all owe Brian a big round of applause for his effort. And this isn't a certificate, so to speak, but Brian sent me a picture today, so I made a copy of it. It's the Chick-fil-A cow, basically kissing the little calf. So, and I have down at the bottom, National Night Out. So, something for you to remember last night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
And I'm sure you'll talk a little bit more about that when you come up with your Working on Music on the Main, we have the four bands. We have the Steel Drum Orchestra from Baltimore, Oregon, Morning Sky, Josh Christina, and Half Series. So, again, talk up vendors, if you know vendors that want to come, you can charge $25 to that refundable when you show up. Again, it's October 5th, the first Saturday in October, 1 to 7. Any questions from my report? All right. Committee report, community enhancement, councilman Green.
Yes, so last week, I sent an email to town manager Gary, and he passed on to Kalina about the town banners. So, when you drive through town, we have our banners that hang that document the year that we were founded as a incorporated. I've seen quite a few, especially the ones down by my house, that are faded, ripped, kind of hanging off utility poles. So, I asked for a quote to go ahead and replace those banners, and as soon as I get that quote back, I'll go ahead and present that.
Now, are you going with the same type, or are we going to go with something different?
I'm going to leave that after I get a quote. I'm thinking same type, but maybe a different style, maybe each banner document the history of New Windsor, various businesses are here, but we'll discuss that.
All right.
As we get closer.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right. Any questions for councilman Green? Public Works, councilman Huffman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. The Public Works crew, probably just like many of you at home, have still been busy mowing this year. It seems like the mowing season has not weaned off this year as it usually does about this time, when you can get away a couple of weeks without mowing. They are still spending a tremendous amount of time keeping up with the mowing around town. So, they spend a lot of time that, a few vacations here and there, which makes the workload even more cumbersome for them to keep up with. But they're doing it nonetheless, and I think the town always looks very well-kept because of the mowing that they do. They've had some issues with one of our dump, with the dump truck, they had to have some hydraulic lines repaired on that. And because of all the usage on the mowers, they've been having some issues with the mowers, keeping them running, possibly even looking at purchasing a new deck for one of the mowers. So, with usage comes repairs, so, and they're going to a lot of uses this year, so we'll keep up with that. The planning commission did not meet in July, however, planning commission chair Mark Schultz and vice chair Glenn Monroe, along with the zoning administrator Dell Gray and town manager Di, met last week with the Windsors, the owners of Frankie's Bar and Grill, to go over the nine modifications that were part of the process that they went through to open the business in town. So, they had a due date of 31 July to finish those, and the town planning commission leaders went down and did due diligence to make sure all those liens were, in fact, completed. And as it turned out, they substantially were done. There was one lien that they still had to take care of, had to do with the engineering rubber curb at the entrances on both north and south side of their parking lot. However, they agreed to a completion date of 16 August to have that done. So, I think it was a good meeting, all in all, that, you know, showed cooperation between the planning commission, working with the new business in town, and the town working, the new business in town, working with the town to make things correct and address the concerns of the town. So, that's all I have to say for it.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments for councilman Huffman? All right. Water and Sewer, councilman Paul Groves.
Jack Coe shares that all water and sewer facilities are functioning as they should. Water's all flowing in the right direction, as supposed to. So, no news is good news on that. We will be scheduling another tour for other members of the planning commission and town council persons. I think the rest of the council had a tour about two years ago, and you're all welcome to do it again. We actually looked at a couple of things that we didn't really address on the tour before, such as the town pond and the walnut orchard. Those are things that are kind of out of sight, out of mind, but we probably need to put those, bring them up on the burner a little bit. So, I'm looking at a date sometime in September, October, that I'll let everybody know when we'll try that again.
Especially the town pond. Growing up, we used to go out to the town pond, the Cub Scouts would camp out there, we'd camp out there many times, swim in the pond, fish in the pond. But now, and there's no blame, you know, if you want to blame me, because I've been on the council and mayor for a lot of years, but there's so many trees in the pond, that there's only one little place that you could really cast a line without getting snuck into the tree. And I think some of our Public Works guys, maybe in the off-season, might be able to tackle some of this, but some of these trees are probably a little bit bigger. But I would like to see that become a active, usable fishing pond for our kids, for youth, for anyone, and then maybe even have a fishing rodeo for the youth. So, at one time, like I say, it was very active out there. There was an incident that somebody washed their car, and the soap killed the fish years ago, so we kind of, I think at that time, kind of said it was off limits, but I'd like to see it come back to being used again. So, maybe one time, we can do a little road trip out there, but, I mean, there's so many trees in there that... And normally, when you're little, something seems very big, and then when you grow up, it's a lot smaller, but it was just the opposite. I didn't know, I didn't think that pond was that big from my memory, you know, so, because when I was a kid, I thought sometime I'd be able to swim across there, but I don't know if I can anymore. But that's something I think we need to look at, and then also possibly check with our Public Works guys, but then maybe also DNR, whether or not there's any funding for some upkeep on that, so. But sometime in the future, get out there and take care of that. So, thank you, sir. Public safety, oops, wait a minute, I went backwards here. Well, we're going to go alphabetical order. Economic Development, councilwoman Schultz.
So, Lehigh, Carroll County, that one group does not meet in the summer, but they'll be meeting in September, and we'll be working on the small business passport again. And I'll be going around and talking with all the businesses in town, and we have a couple of new ones to see if they want to participate, so, because that's been really successful. I did talk to HSP about particip, Human Services Programs of Carroll County, which I'm on the board for and represent in New Windsor, about participating in the events, and they are planning to participate in Music on the Main. So, I just wanted to let you all know, too, the council, but for everybody, the governor's office is having a business summit on September 20th, and I'm going to share that information on the town Facebook page, but it sounds really interesting, and it's not super expensive. So, for, it's very focused on business development, so it may be something worth maybe Gary attending, but if not, definitely, you know, something that we want to let the small businesses know about, so I'll share that information. I'll put the link on the Facebook page. And when I was at National Night Out last night, I walked around and talked to, also talked to a lot of the vendors to see if they'll come to Music on the Main, and several indicated that they were, so I think we're going to have.
Great.
I think it's going to go really well this year, even better, even bigger. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for councilwoman Schultz? Public Safety, councilman Smith.
I just want to echo some of what the mayor said to Brian. National Night Out was phenomenal. It was nice. I was there, actually kind of wearing two hats, because I was in uniform, so I was, as an animal patrol officer, we had our setup there, but it is, it was a nice feel to it last night, I thought. It was really nice to see as many vendors as we had, and people walking around, and get to where, what it should be about, is community coming together and talking about any problems. Had a nice long conversation with the state's attorney, Brian DeLeonardo. The county, still the number one issue in this county is the opioid addiction problem. We've seen some numbers go down on that recently, which is good, because it's trending upward in Carroll County, so it's starting to come down. I think a lot of that has to do with the programs that are in place, not only to punish the offender, but to give people help. I listen to the radio every day. We have the same emergency channels in our van, in our animal patrol vans, so I hear how many times that the interdiction teams are going out. And the amount of overdoses is far exceeding anything that I saw when I was a police officer. We may have had one or two a month, they're getting those a day. And to see that interdiction team, and the law enforcement community, and the public health side of things come together, tackle this together, is really nice. So, that still is their number one problem. And then, and then subsequent point to that is all the things that come with the drug epidemic, thefts, retail thefts, shop liftings, and that kind of stuff. Unfortunately, we've also seen some vandalism lately, of all places, places of worship, which is just mind-blowing to me. The place that you should have sanctuary to get away from all the world's problems, and we're having graffiti sprayed on church buildings. So, we don't see the problems that some of the other areas have, but it has snuck into Carroll County, so be diligent when you see people out and about. I also attended the meeting with the Windsors down at Frankie's parking lot, was warmly I also was very honored at the fact that I had been asked to serve at one of the legislative committee with the Maryland Municipal League. I have some big shoes to fill. Sandy Cusson, our former councilperson, was part of that legislative committee, and she was instrumental in, on that committee, as she's an attorney, and so she was instrumental on that committee, and I was very honored to be asked to join that by President Spiegel of the Maryland Municipal League, and I have accepted that appointment to that commission. Everything else, I'll leave it up to Brian.
Thank you. Any questions for councilman Schultz, or Schultz, sorry, councilman Smith? All right. Community deputy, Brian, you're up.
Good evening. All right. Sheriff's Office, between December 1st and July 31st, responded to 39 calls for service visiting town limits. Out of those 39 calls for service, six required reports, which were the following. July 3rd, at approximately 07:00, deputies involved patrolling in the area of Green Valley Road and Maryland 75 near Clear Ridge Road, observed a vehicle traveling at a high rate of speed. Traffic was complete, or traffic stops completed on a vehicle for several traffic violations in the area of Main Street and Green Valley Road. Upon contact, the odor of marijuana was detected, coming from the vehicle, which led to their probable search. Marijuana was located in the vehicle, which was less than 10 grams, and the driver was released on several citations, and case was closed by arrest. On July 8th, at approximately 11:36 hours, or 8:00, excuse me, deputies responded to the Carroll Hospital Center in reference to a late recorded assault. Investigation revealed that the incident occurred in the 400 block Church Street. Investigation also revealed that the victim was assaulted by family members. The investigation is still ongoing on that one. On July 10th, at approximately 2:19 PM, deputies responded to a, or completed a check of a vehicle registration plate, and asserted that the driver was currently suspended, and the vehicle currently was not insured. Traffic stop was completed on Main Street at Green Valley Road, after the deputy confirmed that the suspended driver was in fact a driver, driver was released on citations and a valid driver, or to a valid driver. Case was closed by arrest. On July 25th, at approximately 9:14 PM, information was retrieved in reference to a subject under the age of 21, who is being served at a local, or served at a local liquor establishment. Investigation revealed that the subject had passed a fake Pennsylvania driver's license, stating that he was over the age of 21. Subject was identified and charged accordingly. Case remains open, independent service to take care of. On July 28th, at approximately 9:51 AM, deputies responded to the area of Church Street near Main Street, emergency property damage accident. On arrival, deputies detected an odor of alcohol, excuse me, coming from the driver. Driver agreed to submit to a standard rights field sobriety test, which further confirmed the deputy's suspicions that the driver was in fact driving under the influence of alcohol. The driver was taken into custody and transported to the Carroll County Detention Center, and agreed to provide a breath sample. The sample of breath resulted in .17 grams of alcohol per 210 liters of breath. Driver was released on citations and a sober, and to a sober driver. Case was closed by arrest. On July 19th, correction, 29th, at approximately 5:52 PM, deputies responded to the 400 block of Church Street in reference to a sorority subject. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the, that an assault occurred between family members. The investigation revealed that one subject had bitten the other. Injuries were observed, and the suspect was arrested and transported to the Carroll County Detention Center for further processing. Case was closed by arrest. All right, that's that. Going into National Night Out now. I truly, truly appreciate the fire department for allowing us to use the grounds, everybody that donated their time, their energy. It was, I feel, a very successful event. As the mayor said, we probably had about 275, 300 people come through, check out our vendors, which we had about 40 of theirs. Actually, one of the vendors is here today. Really, the top? All right. So, this is, I can't remember her name for the life of me, but she's with Carroll Baby. So, if you want to come up and share your organization real quick, and then we'll continue on with the talking about National Night Out.
Hello, hi, my name's Lauren Buckzar, and as Brian mentioned, I recently started an organization, it's under the Canadian Foundation of Carroll County. I created a fund with them, it's called Carroll Baby, and essentially what it is, is it's a diaper bank, so a lot of people don't realize that diapers aren't covered by WIC or by food stamps. I always just assumed they were. And as a mom of two, I feel like parenting's hard enough when you have everything you need. I can't imagine what it's like to not have just the basics. And so, basically, the way it works is that we get diapers through donations, and then they're inventoried, and then distributed. Right now, I'm only distributing to Elmer Wolf Elementary School, because that's the only Judy Center school that is offering some summer programming. But starting in the fall, I'll start distributing to HSP and all four Judy Center schools, and then a couple other small organizations. But the criteria to receive diapers is that the families have to be actively participating in the programs. They can't just show up to get the diapers, they have to be participating in parenting workshops, they have to be participating in playgroups. Really, and that's, for me, is the bigger picture, is that it'll serve, the diapers will serve as a gateway resource to hopefully get families the help that they need, because I do think moms especially will come for diapers. They're distributed in bundles of 20, twice a month, so they're only getting 40 diapers. And if any of you have little ones, you know, that's not what you need, but it's enough to take the edge off. Best practices in diaper banking is 50 diapers per month, so I'm hoping to work my way up to that, to be able to give families a little bit more support. So, I'm in the process of joining the National Diaper Bank Network. There's about 200 diaper banks in the country, so we don't have a huge need compared to other parts of the country, but about 2,000, I'm looking at census data, about 2,000 kids that are in poverty in our county, this is according to 2017 data, and about 6,000 that are close to that point. We have a lot of families that are very much paycheck to paycheck, and diapers are expensive. So, hopefully, hopefully we can, you know, help these families get some of the help that they need. So, anyway, thank you guys for letting us speak.
Where could someone drop diapers off?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, so I have, so that's actually, I've done some diaper drives, and there are a lot of work for the businesses and the organizations. One of the ways that I found to collect diapers is just having drop sites, so I do have one at the town of New Windsor. And for parents, if their kids outgrow a size, or if their child is potty trained, then they can just drop off, whether it's one diaper, whether it's a whole sleeve, and a lot of parents will say to me, do you take, you know, open packs? And yes, we definitely take open packs, especially if you ask a parent that has no diapers, they'll, they're very grateful for whatever they can get. So, that's been a really convenient way, it's not too much work for any businesses, it's just the bin is there, and families can drop them off. I have, I have a list of drop sites on the website, but the town of New Windsor, and I think Springdale might start doing some service learning opportunities to get the kiddos involved with diaper drives, or just diaper bundling, and things like that. So, yeah, it's new, I'm learning as I'm going, but thank you for letting me come in, just to introduce it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts.
This is at town hall, the deputy dropped off diapers. And you also collect baby wipes, and also wipe them as well, so, just some other information. With that, I also wanted to do a huge thank you to Seasons of Magnolia. We had a early luncheon yesterday for some senior citizens communities, or 55 nerve communities, and they actually donated all the profits, or proceeds to National Night Out, so we raised over $530. And with that, the, she also wanted me to mention, they actually made the news today for the event that's going to happen tomorrow, and she is totally upset about everything. She is not a supporter of that, and they kind of put me through pretty much, so we will see what we can do, but unfortunately, hopefully everything works out.
What was the luncheon about, I think, go into a little bit detail on that, please?
So, the luncheon, so what we did was a little bit of crime prevention, and also some statistics for the town, and then we also did frauds and scams. So, I brought in Dean Brewer from the state's attorney's office, who did a presentation for them, so, just the education.
I heard it was well-received, and they learned quite a lot from it.
That's correct, and we had... That's correct. And we had-
Yeah, crime prevention reserve and several residents said the reserve went up and it was terrific.
Great.
I was gonna, I was gonna mention that when he was finished. And, you know, and our kudos to that. It was really, really something that really needed to be done because, you know, some seniors are okay, but others are not. And having that education makes a difference.
Thank you. Were you at 47?
Forty-seven in attendance. And we sent out 81 invitations. So I talked to Jennifer's actually this morning, and she said that they've already booked the venue for next year to make it even bigger and better. So, so just adding on to the National Night Out, just early. So, but other than that, I appreciate everybody's help and it was greatly appreciated for everything.
And also thank you to young gentlemen that were a big, big help.
Yep, well due. So that, those two were Dylan Parker and Josiah Pickett. They are with our Police Explorers Program. So, and they're getting to the age where they'll be getting out soon, but they've pretty much told me, anything I need, they'll be around. So, and they would love to help out even more.
They were phenomenal helping out, helping set up and tear down, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
West Carroll Rec Council, Megan Eves. Nice to have you here.
Good evening. Megan Eves reporting out for West Carroll Rec Council. We don't have a lot to report out this month as our preseason and postseason reports will happen later this month. Just one note of concern as a rec council program, as we're growing, especially the cheer program, the basketball program, Jim Space still is a very valid concern for us. Any ideas from the town council or the community would be greatly appreciated. And also, we do plan on supporting Music on the Main this year, too.
Great. And you are aware of this building not being available probably for six months?
Yes.
Starting around November, December, or December, I think.
Quick question for you. Is that just this room?
I leased this room.
Okay.
There may even be some classrooms. The county's going to be doing some remodeling in the county office building. We're going to be using this as office space for about six months, I think, during the construction.
Okay. I think there are some other facilities we could use if we can't secure anything. Is there anything available here in New Windsor?
I'm sure, check with the fire department.
Okay. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief, Tom.
Good evening.
Evening.
So in July, we had 34 calls for fire rescue assistance, which brings us to a year-to-date total of 197. We had 43 calls for emergency medical assistance, which brings us to a year-to-date total of 355. If you didn't make it, we had a very successful crab feed in July where we had crabs in about 120-degree weather with 500 of our closest friends. If you didn't make it or made it and want to come back, our next one will be September the 21st. All You Can Eat, tickets are $45 and you can see somebody from the fire department to get those. But I will tell you, the last one sold out with a long waiting list, so get your tickets early. We're very excited to announce that, as you might have heard earlier in the year, we're having a baby. So final inspection on our brand-new ambulance. Our committee that designed and built the ambulance is heading to Florida the first week of September for final inspection. And that $286,000 of emergency response equipment that's brought to you by the community it serves will hopefully be in service in mid to late September. That's all I have.
And if you could stay a few minutes and once you got to run off, we need to talk to you, Gary and I, about road closure on College Avenue and bus pickup.
Okay. Yep, no problem at all.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Town Manager, Tab 6.
Okay. Three main things to report on here. Our 209 High Street renovation project is underway. Petron McEdison set the new guy pole and wire on July 30th. The cost was $2,631.62 to the town. Comcast also relocated their guy wire to the new guy pole, and there was no cost to the town on that. So that pole and everything's been situated, removed and situated. We have two prices for grading and installation of the stone base of the parking area along the rear of the Dealman Inn property off of Sport Line. I'll do a little presentation on that under Old Business and do a recommendation on award for that. Sierra Construction is doing the renovation, and we had a pre-construction meeting on July 22nd. They started, they mobilized and started demolition on July 29th, so they've made a lot of progress in there now. One issue that did come up that was worth noting is the heating of the, heating and air conditioning of the hallway area, which is going to serve as a means of egress in the event of a fire with the, I'm not an HVAC guy, but with the, can't be serviced off the main supply of the building. So we're looking at a couple options. One is to install what's called a mini-split device. Contractor's got one estimate of like $11,000 to do that. He's waiting on another one. The second option, which I think I'm leaning towards right now, is to not do anything right now and see how the temperature flow is in the building once the remodeling is all done. And then, and then if we need to do something at a later date and hopefully a later cost. We're trying to hold our costs down and cut costs wherever possible, so I'd rather not start getting into extras if we don't have to at this point. The other thing, we're participating in an energy rebate program through Petron McEdison. It's the Energy Solutions for Business. And ClearResult is the program administrator for Petron McEdison, and Ed Sanchez is the account manager. Sierra Construction Electrician is Providence Electric, and they have done, have worked with many rebate programs and have worked with Ed and ClearResult. So they're handling the application process for that rebate. So it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna get a couple thousand dollar rebate on that cost. It's both material, lighting materials and installation. So I'd rather go in that direction and try to cut some costs there. So, project's going well, though, overall. A lot of changes in there in a short amount of time. The Blue Ridge College Avenue Road Improvement Project, I'm sure many residents have seen that, and lately, they've been working here on 75 Green Valley Road, the storm drain installation. Progress has slowed somewhat, and there's several reasons for that. One being the State Highway Administration, work times are from nine to three on a state highway. So by the time you get set up with your traffic control and get your equipment stabilized and then take it down the end of the day, you might have five hours of work. So it's a short workday for them. They've also run into conflicts with existing utilities that were unmarked. They hit an underground fiber line that was unmarked. It turned out to be, once they called in Verizon, turned out to be an inactive line further up the road towards the intersection. Again, Verizon gave them the okay to cut the line, thinking the line was dead. Line wasn't dead. So those two instances were, you know, stop work, call in who you need to. So there's two days right there where any production on the storm drain was shot. So, and then also, they've had to, the crew was called out on emergency calls on other, in other locations the previous night and didn't work two days. So, it's a good crew. It's a good, real good pipe crew. And, you know, it's just tough to make progress on state road. They're going to be hopefully turning the corner and heading up College Avenue shortly here. So, I met with Doug Smith. He's the, with Arrow, the design engineer, to discuss the storm drain extension along Green Valley Road and on the Cybil property. We're going to get ECM to stake out the right-of-way in that area so that the contractor sees where the limits are. And I'd like Neil and I to meet with Mr. Cybil and just so he knows exactly where that is and what's going on in that area. The lower end of college at the intersection of Green Valley, at some point in the near future, I don't have an exact time, is going to need to be closed down for three to five days in order to allow for the lowering of the road, installation of the storm drain, curb and gutter, the bump out. There's a lot of work going on at that intersection. So this information was posted on the last construction update, and we'll also be hanging flyers door to door. And when we do that, knocking on the residents' doors, just to try to talk to them directly and let them know what's going on. It's going to affect more, more affect the residents on the left side going up to even house numbers 302 to 308, because their driveways and parking is all off of college as opposed to 301 through 307 on the right. They have parking in the access in the rear off of Manning. So there'll be more to come on that, once we get a little closer to that time. We also have to notify Ecology, Trash Services when that road gets closed in terms of how to get the trash there. And as we said, we want to talk to you about the bus stop if we get into that situation with the start of school. So, lastly, the 201 Main Street Park, there was a press release from the county August 1st, 2019. The county commissioners approved the recommendation of the local chapter of Maryland Municipal League to provide funding for four FY20 municipal program open space projects. So New Windsor will receive, just got the actual email, official notification today. New Windsor will see, receive $81,128 in POS funds. There's some information on the handout, the initial application that Mike submitted, and the breakdown of the cost was, is shown here. It was a total of $135,000 is what we initially applied for. And then there's also some information on the initial funding and the breakdown of the state, county, and local funding on that. So just something to think about for the work session later this month is to what we want to eliminate to get down to the, to around the $90,000 mark there. And pretty much the restroom and utilities is going to get there, which we've already talked about eliminating that or putting that off for now. So just something to think about for the work session in August. And just reminder, September 16th work session, I'll be out of town and unable to attend. And that's all I have for my report.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments for Town Manager? All right. Treasurer Report, Donna, Tab 7.
Counselors, as of July 31st, in the general fund, $265,058.38. General fund capital budget, $183,177.56. Enterprise fund, $408,931.74. Enterprise capital reserve and 3Rs, $148,420.92. Developer fees, $344,422.70. Money market, $30,535,057. We have 16 properties currently for sale and three in foreclosure. And first, late charges in the water sewer bills were assessed yesterday. Second one will occur on August 21st, and late notices will be mailed out at that time. Town Manager, die. Town Attorney Ostrander and I are meeting regularly to update the personnel policy, purchasing, procurement, and social media. Any questions?
Thank you. Lehigh Update, no one's here in Lehigh. President's concerned there, Donna?
Yes. Oh, it's just a question.
Oh, a question?
This is my question. I didn't know if it was my name.
What's that?
It's me. I didn't know I was supposed to put my name. I just had a really quick question about, I didn't wonder what it matters? And the storm drains, I guess with the water drain off Grayville and near Clouser, there's like plants going out of them, and I didn't know whose responsibility it was clearing all of that out of the drains.
Our public works guys, but if you'd like to pull weeds? I do, I do, I do mine. I'm not being funny, I do mine. Mine has grass, dirt gets there, stops.
Yeah, but I didn't know if that was our responsibility.
No, it's public works.
Public works guys are the-
Grayville and Clouser?
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, it's pretty thick. I don't know that you can pull it out anymore. I think, I think something has taken hold down, because I think they do pull it out, but you can't get it out. I think that's what's happened, is it breaking off.
They're at low points in the cul-de-sacs, right? They're down-
Yes.
Yeah.
One's up in the quarter, we're recording. So it's like-
Yes. We'll have our, we'll have our public works guys-
Yeah, there's a few of them where I think you just can't pull them out anymore. They're, they're too thick.
I will note it and talk to the public works guys.
Thank you. That was an easy one. Thank you. Old Business, Resolution 08-07-19. That's the fiscal year '20 through fiscal year '23 revised water base rate, Tab 8. Gary, you want to-
Yeah, this is, this was real quick, is a result of paying off the loan for the water tank refurbishment loan. There's no changes to water sewer rates, the user rates or the sewer rates. So you can refer to the resolution prepared by Attorney Ostrander in Tab 8. And it has the breakdown there of the changes, basically picking up from FY20 through FY23 with the adjustment to the water base rate.
And this is based from, a result of Haven Schumacher helping us in Annapolis, giving us $250,000 for our loan. And we were able to pay the rest off by council approval. So, any question or comment on Resolution 08-07-19? Although, or do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution number 08-07-19? We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Paulsbro to adopt Resolution 07-07-19. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye. Those opposed? So, Carrie. Grading and stone base of proposed parking lot area for 209 High Street, Newtown Hall and Public Works building, Tab 8.
Okay, so you have in the tab there, Tab 8, there's a briefing paper. So in summary, like I mentioned earlier in my report, we're required to provide a handicap parking space for 209 High Street, a future home for Town Hall and Public Works. We had a BPR Inc., a local surveying firm, engineering firm, prepare a plan for proposed parking area along the rear of the Dealman Inn property off of Sport Line Drive adjacent to 209 High Street. The handicap parking space will be located closest to High Street to meet the ADA required grades for the paved parking area and access to the new front facade and entrance to the new, to 209, the new building. The handicap space will be 18 by 35 and is required to be paved in order to get our use and occupancy permit ultimately for 209 High Street. We'll do the paving of the handicap space later in the fall, prior to moving in, hopefully along with some other paving in the area. So the overall parking area that we're talking about grading is approximately 75 by 35 feet, which includes the handicap space, the handicapped area. So the grading would be in accordance with the plan prepared by BPR with all the grades and everything. And it will include the removal and hauling of the dirt, the excavation and removal of the tree stumps. If you recall, there were the old, big, huge maples we had cut down six, eight months ago, so we can get them stumps out of there and haul it away. And then installation and compaction of six inches of CR6 stone. So we had two prices to do that work. One from Ballinger and Brooks Construction for $6,992, and then one from Condon's Excavating for $6,000. We'll use the money to, from the $55,000 CD we cashed in to pay for that. So my recommendation is we award the contract to Condon's Excavating for $6,000, the grading and stone base installation.
Comments or questions? Motion?
I'll make the motion to award the contract to Condon's Excavation.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Councilman Huffman, seconded by Councilman Green to award the contract to Condon's Excavating for $6,000. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye. Those opposed? So carry. Any other old business? New business, Resolution 08-07-19A, notice of intent to reimburse for 209 High Street renovations and refinance. We discussed this at length last month, I think. Everybody hopefully is still familiar with all that. If not, we'll go over it again.
Yeah, again, this is, this is basically per town policy procedure and related to the application the town made to, with the Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Finance Program for two different projects. Again, refer to the resolution prepared, prepared by attorney Ostrander. The two different projects, I just put them in there for clarification. They're, they're related, but they're different in the amounts with each one. So it's the, the first was the New Windsor Town Hall and Public Works Building loan refinance for $336,000. And then the Town Hall and Public Works Building renovations, additional money needed for the resident, renovations of $110,000.
Thereby cleared. So here a motion to adopt Resolution Number 08-07-19A.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Paulsborough, seconded by Councilwoman Schultz to adopt Resolution Number 08-07-19A. Questions, comments? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. And then right behind that is the town county agreement.
Tab Nine, there's a briefing paper in there as well. Just did a breakdown for you. This is a yearly agreement that is in accordance with Section 4G of the memorandum of agreement dated October 23rd, 2014, between Carroll County and the Incorporated Municipalities for Cost Sharing of the Stormwater Mitigation Projects and Co-Permittee Responsibilities in complying with the, I want to call it MPDES. It's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and then also the municipal separate storm sewer, what they call the MS4 requirements. The current MOU is set to expire the end of December of this year. The amount, the annual amount New Windsor receives from the county and, as, as well as the other municipalities, unfortunately decreases every year in accordance with that MOU. So I did a comparison there from FY19 totals to what we're getting here in FY20. So you can see the breakdown of what we're getting and the various, where, where that money goes and what it's for. And then the difference from 19 to 20 is $8,227,000 less in revenue we receive. So my recommendation is the mayor sign, witness and return the agreement to Ted Zaleski, the director of management and budget with Carroll County, for execution by county commissioners.
Do I hear a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 New Windsor Town and County Agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Councilwoman Schultz, seconded by Councilman Huffman, to approve the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2020 New Windsor Town and County Agreement.
I have a question. You, you stated in here that this amount decreases each year. Is that by design or is that?
It's, it's in accordance with the MOU.
So eventually it'll go away?
Well, it's due for renewal at the end of this year. So I, I don't know what the, I think it's a five-year, five-year memorandum.
If I, if I may, I think part of the reason that it goes down is theoretically at least, these projects are getting done. Because for those of us who've been around for a while, former town manager Schaefer worked on this for quite a while. And the purpose is to redo a lot of the older stormwater management facilities throughout the county. Once they're redone, theoretically, again, the cost to maintain them should be low. And that's one of the reasons why there's an ebbing fund built into it.
But I do anticipate another reiteration of this.
By then, other ones will have gotten old, so we'll see what happens.
Start back up and then base again on the, the volume and need for the projects at the time that the county determines. Like she said, over time, they get done and there's less and less.
At the time of the draft, all of the projects in the county were surveyed. And, and all, far be it for me to try and explain how that formula worked. But I do know that there was a formula that calculated out what those costs were anticipated to be over time.
All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm standing here.
All right. Any other new business? New Windsor Fire Department Crab Feed, 9/21/19, $45. See somebody from the fire department if you want tickets. They will probably be sold out in a couple of weeks. Musical on the Main Meeting next Thursday, August 15th, right here in this room, 7 o'clock. So come out with your ideas. And one thing on my report, I just wanted to give a little shout out to Manchester Town Manager, Steve Miller, who's been working very hard with all the municipalities to get a inventory of all of the equipment that would be available in case a municipality had a disaster someday. He's got a list of all the dump trucks, the loaders, trailers, all, all kinds of generators and equipment. So, and he and I are working on a mutual aid, mutual aid agreement so that the county's going to come in no matter what. But, you know, if something happens in New Windsor, we can pull from Union Bridge, Westminster, and any of the eight municipalities. So it's a, it's a great effort on the county and on all the municipalities' part, but in particular, Steve Miller from Manchester has done an outstanding job putting all that together. So I want to thank him for, for doing that. Anything else? Do I hear a motion for?
The Musical on the Main Meeting is 7?
7 o'clock, right here. Do I hear a motion for a German?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Thank you. One hour again.